Lincoln City Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, September 20, 2011. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Indicative of duty and justice.
Roll call, please.
Casper, here. Dear Bourne, Bryson.
Here.
Knudsen, Ford, Shannon, Emery.
Here. Thank you. Mr. Townsend, do we have any agenda changes or revisions?
No, we don't.
Thank you. Fellow Commissioners, you have received electronically the minutes of our last meeting, August 16, 2011. Are there any additions, corrections, comments? Hearing none, could we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Minutes are approved as distributed. There is no public this evening present, so there will be no comments on, public comments on, non-agenda items or Agenda Item 6, 7, and 8. There are also no final orders. There are no public hearings, and there is no old business. There are three items under new business. The first item is a discussion on Taft Village Core parking standards. So we will turn this over to staff at this point. It's like Deborah's going to do the honors.
And Kate.
And Kate.
Well, yes, we'd like to talk about the Taft Village Core parking requirement. We have flexible standards in the Taft Village Core that allow a reduced number of parking spaces for residential uses. They, in some cases, they can provide one and a half spaces per unit instead of the usual two. For mixed-use developments, we allow some reduction in parking spaces if the property owner will pay a fee in lieu. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. The third possibility is to reduce the number of parking spaces by providing pedestrian amenities. And so even though we have these opportunities to reduce parking, some of our property owners in Taft have a hard time providing the required number of off-street parking spaces because the lots are small there, and we are encouraging higher density there. We want mixed use, we want multi-story buildings, and in order to do that, you know, the parking spaces add up. In a couple other areas in Lincoln City, like Ocean Lake, we also have reduced parking requirement, and Kate knows the details of that better than I do, so I'll let her talk about that. But we do not, in Ocean Lake, require fees in lieu in order to reduce parking spaces. So we are, first of all, you know, concerned about a fairness issue there, and secondly, we want to know if you would like to look into doing something different with the parking requirement in Taft that would allow us to achieve our goals of density and mixed use and still not run into a situation where people don't have a place to park for those uses. We do have reduced parking options in Taft now because we have a lot of public parking available, and I've just got a couple slides. I'm sure you've all seen them. This is the new lot that is off of inlet.
Right, southeast inlet.
Mm-hmm. And then this is the one between 50th and 51st Street. There's another shot of that. And we have the on-street parking as well in these two shots. So altogether, that totals 228 parking spaces. We are not necessarily advocating for this, but we're asking if the Planning Commission has any feeling for this, whether you would like to look into it further, and if you would, we would be happy to consult with the urban renewal staff about their experience and their intentions when they develop the public parking there. And also, we'd like to talk with the Bay Area Merchants Association, and of course, Alex, you are a representative of that organization, so you might be able to fill us in this evening. Kate, do you want to say anything before we turn it over for their discussion?
Yeah, you mentioned that the other two Pearl Zones have some parking reductions, and that's true. In the Nell Scott Zone, we allow businesses to count parking spaces that are on the street in front of their parcel. We also, if you're on Highway 101, we allow you to count parking spaces within 200 feet of your parcel, public spaces that are on the street toward your required parking. And if you're a mixed-use building in Nell Scott, there is no minimum off-street parking requirement for the commercial part of a mixed-use building if you're within 400 feet of a public parking facility. And that provision is also true in Ocean Lake, where the commercial part of a mixed-use development isn't required to have its own off-street parking if it's within 400 feet of a public parking facility. The residential part still has to provide the off-street parking. So that's, those are the differences. And those two zones, as Deborah mentioned, don't have the provision to pay the in-lugue fee as Taft does. The Taft Village Core was adopted in 2000, November of 2000. Ocean Lake was adopted in 2007, and Nell Scott in 2008.
Ocean Lake, 2007? I thought it was before that.
No.
So we just are throwing this out to you all for discussion.
So what's the genesis of this, I guess?
Well, we recently had a request from a property owner who wants to expand with mixed use, and they benefit from all three of these ways to reduce parking, and yet they're still going to be short a couple spaces. It's a regular, a fairly small lot, and we have also had other people come in and ask us about locating in Taft, and depending on the type of use, parking always comes up. And so it's not just a single person, but that's sort of been the impetus for this current, you know, discussion topic.
Questions, people? Comments? Alex?
Everyone's looking at me.
Go ahead, your perspective, if you have one.
Well-
Either official or unofficial.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm always hesitant to speak for the whole group of Bay Area Merchants Association. I will say that, and Kate and I were talking about this earlier today, that parking is always, always a kind of volatile issue. Even with all of the additional parking that's available with the new lots, there are several times a year that the Taft Village Core fills up, whether it be 4th of July, or the Sandcastle Contest, or what have you, and parking becomes an issue. And everybody, even though there's, you know, 350 other days where it's not, those are the days that people remember. And it's, and it's important to the business to understand there. However, you know, I think that continued development of the Taft Village Core is also very important. You know, there's, you know, we, in this economic climate, you know, we see a lot of, you know, empty storefronts, and, you know, we'd like to, you know, we try to encourage that economic development. And so, you know, I'd imagine that, you know, that this could be, something could be fashioned that would be not just palatable, but probably would get the membership down there behind it. But again, you know, it's, there's lots of things that I think, "Well, that sounds great," and then I, you know, start talking to people, and it goes the other way, you know? And so it's, you know, it makes sense to me. One thing I was curious about, I thought that the Taft Village Core zone was all mixed use, so it could be the residential, does it have to be designated? You know, when you're building, you have to say, "This is only going to be residential," or "It's going to be mixed use," or "It's going to be commercial only."
Well, and I think in some parts of the Taft Village Core, if you're building something new, it has to include some mixed use. You know, it has to have a mixed-use component. But there are other parts of the Taft Village Core where you can just have a single-family dwelling, or just a commercial use.
Sure.
And anytime you'd be converting to, from a commercial use to mixed, or to residential or something, it would probably require a building permit, so...
Okay. I'm just saying, there's no variance or anything like that, then if you want to, if you find a lot in the Taft Village Core, you can build something for commercial or something for residential. That was how I understood it.
Depending on the location. There is a portion of it where mixed use is a requirement.
Okay.
If you're building new.
Okay. And this wouldn't be for, you say this, residential would be excluded from this? And that's...
Well, we were thinking that it's important to have some parking on-site for residential use. I mean, we're open to, you know, discussing that, but typically, someone who is looking for housing wants to have a nearby parking space they can call their own.
Sure.
And I don't know what the magic number is for that, but that was our thinking.
Could you elaborate on this fee-in-lugue of parking scenario?
Well, right now, we have a fee-in-lugue of parking for mixed use that is $2,000 initially per space. If you can't provide a space, you need to pay instead $2,000, plus an annual fee of $192.
And this is-
That's for mixed use.
That's for mixed use. For straight commercial use, it's $4,000 initially, and $192 per year annually.
And this applies only in Taft?
I believe it does.
Yeah, at this time. It was a resolution passed in 2003 for the Taft Village Core.
At city council, though?
Yes.
Yeah. And, I mean, this may be going off in a direction we don't need to go, but Ocean Lake did not do that.
Right.
They were given that option, obviously, I would think, or...
I don't know whether it was discussed at that time.
I don't recall that discussion. I don't know if you recall it.
It was, actually, there's quite a bit of discussion about the fee-in-lugue. I don't remember exactly how it went. A lot of it focused on exactly how the number was set, and on the annual rate. I will say that nobody has ever paid a fee in lieu for parking and ever come in and asked for it.
Even in Taft?
Yep.
Okay. I guess, I guess I don't like to see inconsistencies, quite honestly, unless there's a driving force behind it, and if nobody's paid it, then perhaps there's not a reason for that to continue. Judy, anything?
Well, I kind of agree with you, because I, it seems like it would be penalizing a fee when the other two areas do not have fees. Seems like we want to promote business in Taft way, but then again, fees have never been paid, so I don't understand why the fees should even be relevant.
One of the big concerns was sort of the other side of that. At the time, there were no areas that didn't require parking, and to say you don't have to provide parking was, I think, considered unfair unless you provided something instead of providing parking, which was the fee to offset some of the cost of the city providing the parking. Now, since then, we've had Ocean Lake changes put into place, then we've had the Nell Scott changes put into place, so the circumstances are different now. There's a different inconsistency than there was at the time.
The business that was once there was burned down by a fire, too, might, that's different. The restaurant that was there?
Right.
Right? So, yeah. That might have taken up some parking because of the business location there and clientele, which doesn't now.
Right.
Right?
Right, it doesn't now, because there's nothing there, but when that site's redeveloped, they will have a little more parking flexibility, because they're on 101, and they can count on-street parking on 101 without paying a fee. And, that's right, it's without paying a fee on 101, isn't it? Yeah. So they've got that flexibility, and of course, there's the reduced residential parking requirement for Taft, which is one and a half spaces instead of two. Now, that's a spot that will require, that does require mixed use. Because all of 101 in Taft requires mixed use for new construction.
And that does raise the question, if a three-story building goes in there, and it's a large building, it could require a lot of parking. So we may have to, you know, consider that. If a site is large enough to accommodate a considerable amount of square footage, then maybe they also have to provide parking to go along with it. Maybe the reduced parking should apply to small properties and small uses, because that's a little more difficult to be able to accommodate. We're still in the very early stages of considering this, and so...
Was the, was the parking, the public parking completed when this was put in?
It was part of, it was part of the overall process.
It was in process?
Yeah, it was, it was the, you know, part of the overall Taft redevelopment program was-
But we knew what those spaces were going to be.
Yeah, improving the lot at 50th and 51st, reconfiguring the parking along 51st. We put in the new lot on inlet on the east side.
Just last year?
Yeah, that was recent.
Well, if you'd like us to take a closer look at this and bring back something, we'd be happy to do that.
Well, I'd like to see something come back, but also kind of urge you to consider the overall situations that go on here in the city, and that's for the residential streets, because basically, it's very hard to park residential streets in Lincoln City. You know, where parking is available, there's been seen there. It's just awful hard to park residential neighborhoods without blocking the road. Situation goes on a lot. It's all over town. So something can be done. System, when you're analyzing things, to look at the residential parking situation. Usable?
Okay, it's a good idea. We are, of course, doing our walking and biking plan, and we are also going to be working on an update to our transportation system plan, our master plan for the city in this coming year. So it might be that we could address the parking problem generally in town at the same time.
You're obviously not getting a lot of constructive feedback on this at this point.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see what you had, you know, what you could come up with, and, you know, I'd be interested to see what the BAMA membership had to say about, you know, whatever it is that you guys put together.
Kate, do you want to, and if you have an opportunity to ask them, maybe you can, yeah, let us know?
If you could, you know, if you-
For our efforts.
If you could line up, maybe somehow, and put maybe in here red lights, red lines, what you want to change and so forth, but what it is now and what the suggestions are, that would be helpful.
Okay.
And just a curious question here. I know we got new constr- It's Highway 101, just where US Bank is, they're remodeling the old view.
Yes.
Plans on that one? Old wedding receptions there. Carrie is trying to figure out where cars in that situation, they're gonna sum out.
Well, they may have valet service.
The only thing I can think of where they can park is I can't figure out where they're gonna park. Sure, there's concerns there.
We haven't gotten an application for a particular use there yet, although we do, they do have building permits going on, so... Maybe I'm speaking out of turn, I don't think we've gotten a-
Well, the interest, they have building permits to do all the work, you know, without going into a specific use. An interesting part of our code is that if you're changing the use of the building but not expanding the building, you're not required to add additional parking. So in the case of that building, they're changing the use, certainly, but they're not enlarging the building.
I think they're still gonna have funerals there, or celebrations of life. I think, I don't know.
I can't figure out where they're- It's been tiny enough part of the streets, but that's livable, but I don't know where they're gonna park.
It's an interesting question.
That's your problem. Till they come and ask for a variance.
That's right. That's right.
Okay, anything else on this? Okay, thank you all. And we would segue into item number two, the update on Lincoln City walking and biking plan.
Okay. Well, we had our first meeting of the project advisory committee for the Lincoln City walking and biking plan, and I thought it was a very successful meeting. We had a good turnout of the members, there were a few people who couldn't be there, but we had an interesting discussion about those folks' visions for walking and biking in the city, and also the issues that are presented for people in their groups. Our members generally represent groups or businesses in the city. We have, for instance, Judy is representing the Nell Scott Neighborhood Association. We have Alex representing BAMA, at least for right now, and I hope you're going to continue. But we also have someone from the hospital, and we have someone from county transit, and we have someone who is the liaison to the Hispanic community, so, and county health. And so we have a very diverse and interesting group, and everyone had three minutes at that meeting to talk about the issues and their vision, and we came up with a great list of ideas. We also have a website now. If you haven't visited the site, it is lincolncitypedbike.org, and you can try to pull that up on your computers if you want now, but I think we'd run into a problem with so many people on the internet, but I have it right here. You can see the website, and it's, this is supported, and it was set up by our consultants, but they are happy to put on articles and that kind of thing that we generate. So I'll just kind of run through it just a little bit so you can take a quick look. This is our homepage, and in the "What's New" column, it does draw attention to an interactive map, and that, we'll do that in a second, but you can go to the map and make comments, and tie those comments to specific locations, and it might be a complaint, or, you know, something that you like, that you want to highlight for the consultants. We have a mailing list, so if you want to give your name and address, you can get on the list and get notices of upcoming meetings and anything new going on in that regard. We have some background information here, just talking about the project area, what are things like, and it also provides a schedule for upcoming meetings and completion of the plan. As you can see, it's going to be in the works for a while. We expect about a year before we have adoption. We're going to have our next PAC meeting in November, and our first public meeting will be in January, most likely. We wanted to miss the holidays, and that sort of spans quite a bit of time there. But anyway, in the meantime, we are asking people to give us feedback about how they get around in Lincoln City. We have a couple ways to doing that. Here, I should mention, here are our meeting materials from the PAC meeting and a couple photographs, and we also have upcoming events, and we are going to be putting on our memos that are being developed by the consultants on the vision and goals and objectives, the existing conditions, best practices, toolkit, and so on, until we get to the draft and final plans. We also have at the bottom articles that have been in our newspaper, or maybe possibly the Oregonian, that will be of interest to people who are biking and walking. We have a nice article from Patrick Alexander, "Hitting the Road." He walked the full length of the city on Highway 101 on Labor Day weekend as a follow-up to our first PAC meeting, so that's, it's pretty good. Okay, we do have a comment page. It's also where you can sign up for the mailing list. Here's our input map, and one comment about the input map is that it works best with something other than Internet Explorer, and so if that's your default, you have to make a bit of an effort to use Firefox, or Google Chrome, or Apple Safari. So anyway, well, I'll just take you there so that you can see what happens. Kate has signed in here, and if you don't have a Gmail account, that's one easy way to get a sign-in, but I think it will take other email addresses. Then, let's see here. Okay, so that's, I'm trying to think what happens next here. Okay. You can see that people already have been making comments. The red comments are crashes and near misses. The yellow, little exclamation point, I guess this is, is for things you don't like. The green is things you do like. So you can go to these and click on each one of these and see what someone said about that particular location. And you can add a new comment by clicking on the, on this yellow exclamation point, and then finding the location. This always messes me up, but... You know what, I don't think I'm doing this right. You know what I'm doing wrong, Kate? Hit Directions. Oh, no, no, no. Okay. Well, at any rate-
We haven't practiced too much.
We haven't practiced on it very much, but when you first come to this page, okay, when you first come to this page, there we go. I didn't press edit, I think that will help. Now, let's see if I can do this a little bit easier. No, I can't. Add a place mark, there we go. Okay, so I have to find my location where I want to add my place mark, and maybe that would be on 22nd Street. would be on 22nd Street. Okay, then you put in your title and you say, "Head to Bay Trail." And then you can say in this box something, you know, "I really like, I really like the head to, oops, like the Head to Bay Trail," and then you can click okay, correct your spelling, and it should show up here on 22nd Street. So I think I made it blue, and it's a general observation. There it is. There's my comment. So, anyway, I'd encourage you and anyone watching at home to go to the website and play around, and if you do have problems, there are ways to submit requests for help, and you can call us at the city, and hopefully we can help you.
And that's just one way to participate. You can also leave comments on the website. We also have in front of you a flyer that we're trying to get distributed at the schools, and anywhere we can think of where groups of people gather, and we have created this in both English and Spanish, so you'll see on the back, it's in Spanish. And then we also provided for you a questionnaire that we're distributing also in many places, anyone that will allow us to place it where they feel folks would like to give us some feedback, and we'll have this also in English and Spanish. So take a look at it, fill it out if you like, return it to us.
You have a Facebook presence, too.
We do have a Facebook.
We do.
How could we have forgotten that?
Let's see if I can get back there. Okay, on the homepage, way down, whoops, not there yet. On the bottom, right here, we have a link to Facebook.
There it is.
Yeah.
So, we would like anyone who is a Facebook user to like our page, because then their friends can like our page, et cetera, and it will get the word out to more people, and anything new we want to announce will go to all of the people that like our page. It's just a faster way to get news out that we want to be distributed. So please like our page.
Okay.
What kind of feedback are you getting generally? Is it too soon to tell, or?
Well, I think generally people are quite excited about, about having, having a plan to do some improvements for walking and biking, and we just want to make sure that we reach all those different segments of the population. Our meeting, as I said, was well-attended and enthusiastic, and we, we got our questionnaire done in time for skate park tournament this weekend, and we're hoping that they were distributed there, so we're expecting some feedback from that. We also, I think Kate maybe mentioned that these went around to the schools, and so we're hoping that we can get the word out, and it is still in the early stages, but with our webpage and our Facebook page, we want to get people involved, and we are encouraging everyone to give us input about the routes that they like to use, and, and the improvements needed, and also the things they like, so.
We're also hoping to be at the farmer's market at least one time at the point in the season, to, just to, just to make people aware that there is a plan underway, and to get their input through our questionnaire.
And maybe also to demonstrate the webpage and get people hooked up with that.
Well, when all is said and done, I think that people will be very gratified with your taking this on and starting this and spearheading it, and so.
The meetings seem really positive.
I thought so, too.
Good. And thanks for you guys' involvement as well. Okay.
That's that.
Thank you. Then we, I think next we'll turn this over to Joan for a couple of training items.
I'm going to be pretty brief, but I thought I would take this opportunity to take about five minutes to go over, just by way of reminder, something that I don't focus very often on in training, and that is the requirements for the substance of your decision. We talk about ethics and conflict of interest and procedures a lot, but don't usually talk about the actual decision. Normally, your, your decision is phrased as a motion, and it can be a motion to approve or deny, and you have, or in some cases, to approve with conditions that have, that come out of the hearing. Staff will usually make some kind of recommendation about whether the criteria are met. If it can't determine whether the criteria are met, it usually calls that out. The state law essentially requires you to, when you make a decision, to explain what the standards and criteria are, to mention them, and to have a description about whether those criteria are met. In other words, what's, what the justification for your decision is, and what you based it on. So that, that fact-finding is essentially what a judge does, because you could hear from two people. One person saying, "This application meets the standard because of the information they give you." Another person could say, "Here is some information showing it doesn't meet the standard." There, you've given, you've been given two, two types of evidence. You determine what the facts are. You may believe, you may find some evidence more believable than other evidence. That's also a role that, that you play. Your decision, assuming everything is met correctly, will stand on appeal, provided you do two things. One, you, you say what, how you reached that decision. You give some explanation, and the statutes basically call that findings of fact. You sit, you make those findings of fact. Now, again, staff prepares a lot of that for you, or will come back with a final order and, and give that to you later, because sometimes we don't always know in advance. We know what the application materials are, but we don't know what the testimony is going to be, what your questions are going to be, and how you're going to look at those standards, and whether or not they're met. So we can have a draft, sometimes two draft decisions. I've, I've been involved in where we've made a draft decision to approve and a draft decision to deny, and we're going to fill in the blanks with the facts that you found, and how you link the evidence that, that's been in the record with what you, you know, the standards and criteria that you've applied. What happens is if you don't make that explanation, and a decision is appealed, one of two things can happen. The Board of Land Use Appeals can remand it and say, "You need to explain why you made this decision." In some cases, if they can determine that there is enough evidence in the record, they can find it, then they can go ahead and, and make a determination on their, their own. This, the one situation where they look at it closely, I, I mean, they always look at it closely, I'm sure, but if there's a requirement for you to interpret an ordinance when you're making a decision, in other words, you could say that this parking standard requires one space, and somebody else could think, "Well, no, actually, I think the ordinance says the parking standard is one compact space," and those are two different things. If there's, if it's not clear, you always have the authority, assuming there is time to continue a hearing, to get further evidence on that question. Sometimes you will just make a decision, "This is the interpretation we believe is correct when we're applying this standard." Technically, the, in our ordinances, it's the city council that makes an interpretation of an ordinance, and if, if the decision is going to depend on that interpretation, then we now have the availability and the procedures to basically forward your decision to city council and ask them to approve it because it contains an interpretation. I think we've done that at least twice that, that I can recall. Doesn't happen very often, but it occasionally happens. Again, there is a statute that says if the city doesn't make an interpretation and it's necessary for the decision, then Luba can make that interpretation, but it's, it would prefer to defer to the city who has the authority to make the interpretation in the first place. And I'm not using the statutory language. Basically, what happens is that the magic buzzwords that they use is, they can reverse a decision or remand it if the decision is not supported by, these are the buzzwords, substantial evidence in the whole record. You would think the word substantial means, you know, something like 99 percent, and, and I know we've talked about this a couple of other times, but the case that I've given you explains what that phrase, substantial evidence, means, and I think it's on page, I tried to find a short case, actually. This is a Luba decision, Citizens for Responsibility versus Lane County. This is from 2007. I'm sorry, this is Court of Appeals decision, but they state what Luba's standard is. At the top of the page, "When reviewing a land use decision, Luba may reverse or remand if the local government's decision is based on facts that are not supported by substantial evidence in the whole record," and they cite to the statute that I just read.
Is it on page four of our-
Page four of your handout. I'm in that first paragraph at the top, second line. "A finding of fact is supported by substantial evidence if the record viewed as a whole permits a reasonable person to make that finding." And it cites to a 1988 case. That is still good law in, in Oregon, and I think it's interesting, it basically is the reasonable person standard. In other words, you could have conflicting evidence, you could have evidence that you need to weigh one way or the other, and Luba and the courts will not second-guess the city's decision if a reasonable person could have made the decision you made. In other words, somebody might have made a different decision. That's not the legal standard. Maybe there are two completely different ways of looking at it, one that resulted in an approval, and one that resulted in a denial. But if a reasonable person could make the decision you made based on the evidence that was in the record, then your, your decision will be upheld. In other words, they don't want to second-guess the application of those local standards. So the critical piece is the explanation, and that's, we, we use those words, findings, and I really just wanted to emphasize that they're, they're findings. You say what the important facts are, and, and staff sometimes helps you with that, and we try to, to link those together to, to make sure that we've met the, the legal standard for the decision. So sometimes at the end, when you're making a motion, we'll, it's-
You'll push it.
Either Richard or I might try to steer you to say, "We need to understand why, you know, the basis for the motion," or what, what you're basing the, the decision on. And that's because we're going to try to phrase that and make sure that it's tied back to the criteria that you've been looking at or discussing.
One thing to add about substantial evidence is, it doesn't mean a majority.
Right.
It can be, in fact, in this, in this case that Joan gave you, it looked like most of the evidence was contrary to what the county found, but they're just saying there was, there was credible evidence, and a reasonable person could have concluded what they did based on the evidence in the record. Doesn't mean that it's the majority, it's just there's something that's good enough to, to hang on to. I remember from my administrative law class, the substantial evidence is more than a scintilla, was, was what we were told.
Right. So it's, it's not this, what I think of is this criminal standard of, you know, at least 51 percent are the preponderance of the evidence, where it, it's, it's really a different creature altogether. It's, you have some evidence, that evidence is credible, and it's sufficient to meet the standard. I thought this case was interesting, and I'm glad you referred to the actual case. I, I won't take the time to go into the details, but I hope you read it, and it struck me because it sounded like there was a lot of very persuasive testimony of the issues about fire suppression and whether this property was appropriate, or whether the, the use of, that had been proposed was gonna increase the fire hazard, the potential for fire hazard, whether that was going to be appropriately dealt with. And the court basically said, "We're not, we, it's a slender read," you know, and you're, clearly, the decision could have gone one way or the other, is what they were signaling, but that's not their job. Their job is to either say there's not enough, you know, no reasonable person could have made that decision, or it's unconstitutional, or some other basis. I'm, was only looking at the substantial evidence standard, because I think that's the one that we're, we deal with most often, or that we keep in mind, because it's, that's the standard that, that we have to reach.
Would, would it be fair to say that if we've done our job properly, the chances of overturning on appeal are pretty slim?
Yeah. If, if you, and if, part of that is, of course, following the procedures, making sure everybody gets the correct notice, and everybody's had their opportunity to testify. But yeah, if you, if you've, if you've done your job, then hopefully that, that decision will explain itself. What I like to think of is, could somebody pick up the decision a couple years later, not knowing anything about the history of it, and would they be able to tell from the application, the staff report, and the decision, what the basis for the decision was? And that's a good record for the city, especially if you know, when you make decisions, as time goes on, "Didn't we have a case like this four or five years ago, but we decided differently in that case?" Same standard, the application might look similar, but there could be some critical facts that then make the outcome different. And I know that when that's happened, at least once, your explanation was a very cogent one, and I was, you know, pretty sure that decision would stand. So you can have similar things occur, and, and you know, in your mind, you're confident that you've applied the criteria correctly, but the facts are a little bit different. Sometimes it's not always obvious. Sometimes the applications can look really identical, especially in situations I was thinking of, like variances. But sometimes small, what looks like an inconsequential fact, one of you or more of you will pick out of the record and focus on, and say, "No, this is really more important, and here's why," and then you, you ask questions about it, and you ask for an explanation, usually from the applicant or from staff. And that's the role of staff, too, is to help you with that, with your, with those questions.
That's very helpful. I appreciate that.
The only other thing I wanted to ask you, really is a question for you tonight, but I asked Kate to forward to me a link, which she did, and it was very helpful, to the training materials that you have available to you. And I know, when I looked at them, my, I think I had given you a memo on conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts from a couple years ago, and there are some other materials, including the land use planning goals and state, sort of the overview of the state program. And I wondered, now that we are all on computer and have this access, are there some things that you would like to have, especially, I think of, you're at home on a Sunday night, you're reading the packet, and you have a question, whether it's a question about procedure, or a question, something that you would like to have access to, some specific kind of materials. Is there something we could provide that would be helpful, whether it's an index to, you know, statutes or rules of the city, or, I don't know, some kind of table of contents that might help you find things if you wanted to look up something yourself? I don't know. It might-
Statutes, I think, would be helpful.
You know, you can get all the statutes on the internet, but I'll send you a link as to how to do that, and I'll, I can send you, I think I have a, a pretty good index at home of which statutes apply to you as the planning commission and your process. Are those the ones you're thinking about? Okay. You might think of it later.
I'm just thinking that, you know, I have this book, which I don't know whether it's still current or not, that I faithfully bring with me, that municipal- still current or not, that I faithfully bring with me, the Municipal Code.
Municipal Code.
And, you know, when we talk about things, I spend time out there trying to find something in here. So maybe it would be helpful if it all in one place, everything that we needed.
Do you access the code when you're reviewing the packet? Do you know how to access the city code online?
I can just look in here.
Do any of you access it online?
Yeah.
Is that, does that work?
Pretty easy to access. I mean, they have it split chapter and then subchapter.
And it's searchable, so...
All right.
I know sometimes you don't always have that access with you, but if you are reading the packet, I'm assuming that you're reading the packet electronically, so I'm assuming you have your computer with you, but that doesn't necessarily mean you have internet access.
Well, and I wasn't, I wasn't even aware of it for the first month.
That the code was online?
That the code was there, yeah. And then I discovered it was...
Okay.
Yeah. Quite the...
One of those aha moments.
Yes, one of those.
And I know what, when you're conducting a hearing, sometimes I will have the code open at the same time that I have the packet open, because I'm, what I'm doing here while I'm clicking is I'm flipping back and forth, making sure that I'm, I have, I'm looking at the whole paragraph. Sometimes we don't, you know, put in the whole entire listing of a criteria. We reference it by number, but sometimes...
Well, and sometimes things come up in discussion that isn't presented, and I've run back to that.
So you use it, too?
I use it during...
Good.
During discussion, during...
So I guess that's what led me to think. We have this electronic capability. Should we be, you know, just paying attention to things that might be helpful to you in your role? So if I think of something, I'll let you know what it is. If staff thinks of something, I'm sure they'll put it on there, but it's a database, and it should be something that could be useful to you. So just let me know.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Then we would turn to reports and comments. Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to sort of update you on what's happened, things that you've acted on, the ordinances that we've talked about. The attached single-family in the R1 zone, that was adopted by the city council. Changes in the public notice requirements, remember to expand the area of notice from 100 to 250 feet and allow us to update the assessor's database. That was adopted. Geological setback issues, that's still in the hearing stage, the city council. Height ordinance amendments, the Nelscott portion of that has been adopted. The other relating to height in the, how we measure height in a flood zone, that's still under further review. Commercial design standard changes were adopted. A-frame and non-conforming signs, that's something, actually, you all remanded us to take further staff review, and that's still going on. And the open space and park rezonings, that was adopted.
Nice to know we're doing something productive, right? City Attorney.
Nothing more.
Planning Commissioners. Okay. No public, so we don't need to worry about that. Last item on the agenda, the next meeting.
Meeting, October the 4th, but we have nothing on the agenda. If you would like, we can cancel that meeting.
Well, if there's nothing on the agenda and there's nothing that we need to learn about, then could we have a motion to cancel?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And we'll look for us on the 18th of September, October. Okay. Oh, by the way, we're adjourned.